Everybody silent.
Hey, Ron. Make sure whoever's got speak tags on.
What's that?
Whoever speaks has a sign in.
Yeah.
Okay. The eleventh of August, we will not call this meeting in order. Your call, please.
Ron Jones?
Yep.
Tom Johnson.
David Arms?
Here.
Tom Sargent?
Here.
Patrick Leder?
Here.
Seth Haylen?
Here.
And Flot Wilson? Here.
With the absence of Tom Johnson, Seth will be a running number. Okay. Uh, do I have a motion to accept the agenda of this evening?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please signify.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carried. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes? Motion to accept the minutes, then?
Which minutes, Ron?
Yeah, which?
I haven't seen the minutes.
Haven't you? Nobody, nobody seen the minutes? Okay.
Oh, okay.
We won't.
I don't see an email. We can, um, we can just push those to the next meeting then. Kayla did them, they're finished. But I thought that she sent them out to you, so maybe that was just communication.
Okay. We will skip the minutes until next meeting. Okay, next thing on our agenda is an application from Craig Di Lorenzo at the location at forty-five twenty-nine, forty-five forty-seven Magador Road. The parcels are noted here on here, and I'm sure everybody here knows the parcels that we're talking about. We've had three months' worth of meetings and discussions. We've had a public hearing on this, so we are going to keep the comments tonight to five minutes. We're asking that, you know, you don't just repeat what the last person said. Keep it kind of short and sweet. Whoever would like to speak, please sign the book up there, and you do have five minutes to present. Okay?
I have one more thing. I've got a letter from a resident that couldn't make it. I can read it out for the minutes. If that's okay with Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Hi, Sean Lawler. Live at four-five-two-eight Magador Road and own my property. Neither I nor my wife will be able to attend the public work session that will be held Thursday, June ninth at seven. Neither will either, either of, be able to attend the live meeting. I'd like to discuss some of the amendments. I would like to express my concern over the proposed zoning changes of my property and the properties in my neighborhood, specifically the changing of ninety-nine point seven seven acres of land from the R O Magador to L. I oppose this change and urge you to keep the zoning as it is. Please consider this amendment and retain the old zoning. Sean Lawler at four-five-two-eight Magador, you sign it. Just want everybody to be aware that the west side of Magador passed yesterday morning at the trustee level, so the west side of Magador is R R. And then, I'm sorry, the east side. The east side of Magador, thank you. East side of Magador is R R, and then that along Howell Road is R three, and that will take effect thirty days from yesterday. Tonight, we're here for the west side with the O R changing to L I proposal.
Okay. Last month, someone presented a thing that owners just bought this on a land contract, and it was not illegal contract. So, we asked for an opinion from the Portage County Prosecutor's Office, and we got an opinion in the affirmative that yes, it is legal for them to request and receive a variance of allocation. So, from there on, is there anyone else that would like to speak at this moment? That's our five minutes.
Just to kind of give you guys an idea, they kind of degraded my property the last time we were in. Got some photos here. That's front yard, backyard, backyard. You'll see a putting green there. You'll see my rock. Fire pit back and back.
What is your name and address, sir?
Jim McKee, four-five oh five. I'm right beside the property that's being requested.
Gee, that's a nice fire pit.
Thank you very much. I kind of like to think of my property as water and circumference. Always changes, always moves, always kind of. You can see down here, that is not on my property. And this is the condition of the grass next door. It's six feet high, and as I said, that is not mine.
What was that building that you were in there?
This is my dirt screen. So, you put dirt up there, and you screen the dirt into the wheelbarrow, and then you could put it up here for the putting green. Because if you have large rocks, it's kind of like a furnace. Sun hits on that, and it starts burning the grass and killing it. And reasons not to rezone to L I and keep it to O R. They are not maintaining the property now. The grass is six feet tall in areas. If the neighbor and I didn't mow it, I couldn't see to get out of my driveway. It is my impression they are intentionally allowing the property to deteriorate, and that's just sad. The additional noise would be unbearable from semis, dump trucks, tow motors, and the backup beepers that come along. It's going to happen twenty-four hours a day. Not one resident wants this change to L I at this meeting. Mr. Laith at the previous meeting stated he is okay making it as O R. Doesn't seem like these guys care about the area or greenfield. They want this lead, liking the application, this property. He's Bruce Bowers, and he is the owner. Requested zoning, or the requested rezoning, that they were requested at the first meeting. There are two of them, and neither one of them were there. This meeting was requested by them. Second meeting, they both left early. I'm very nervous because at the last meeting, they were asked, why do you need it to be rezoned in L I? And he couldn't give a conclusive answer. The Portage County Reporter's Office and the Auditor's Office are very concerned about them using misleading information on application. You cannot reward bad behavior. In closing, I myself and others are looking to you, the commission, are looking to you, the commission, to help keep us safe from bodily harm and death. Not six months ago, a gentleman died. Another had third-degree burns all over his body. This happened three hundred yards away in an L I zoned area. When the explosion occurred at Cork and Grand, it shook my house, and other neighbors rode their way. It also caused hundreds of thousands of dollars of property damage. Kent City Zoning said they would not put L I near residents due to the risk of resident injury, i.e. chemical, aerosol, and explosive. And one last side note, they have an abandoned car over there on their property. All the windows are broken out. Tires are flat, sitting on rims. Unregistered. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. As maybe you've noted, that whole area behind them is all, is all Talents. So, yeah, we, we can't control what Talents does, or Kent, because none of it is Kent. So, like I said, we've, we've listened to everybody's side on this, and given it a great deal of thought. We've asked Portage Planning, and we've had affirmative note from them. We've gone to, so far as to go to the Portage County Prosecutor's Office to make sure that the deal would be legal, you know, because they were accused of doing illegal, the illegal application, and it was not. So, at this point, I believe we're going to take a vote on what we're going to do here. Either it's going to be affirmative or a non-affirmative. So, if I can have...
Is there any other, Ron, anybody else who wants to say anything?
I have something I did.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I mean, we're not, we're never misleading anyone, and we learned that from the prosecutor. They've said that everything is okay. Just because there's two of us sitting here, and my name's on the application, isn't misleading either. I'm Craig Di Lorenzo, my name's on the application. Tom, because Tom and I are buying this together, it's not really about misleading there. So, this, that's why I want to be accused of fraud. Couple of just random things with O R and L I. The exterior storage on O R and L I with either one is exactly one hundred percent word-for-word the same. Because I know that was one concern about having exterior storage. So, whether it's O R or L I, you can have the same exact exterior storage. It has to be fenced in. Your zoning spells out exactly what you can and can't do, and they're both exactly the same. O R and L I have another difference is typically with an office development, you have one space, parking space, per every three hundred square feet of office user. With L I, you have typically one parking space per fifteen hundred square feet. That just goes back to the parking issue from the beginning that you thought we were going to put a parking lot, which we are not going to put a parking lot, and we are still willing to de-restrict the property against an exclusive parking lot, because that's not something we're really going to do. Just another random thing with O R and L I. O R has a side setback of twelve feet from the other property. L I has a side setback of twenty-five feet from the other property. So, that benefits neighboring property as well, because L I is going to be set back further and have more restrictive setbacks. Just a couple of things there to rebuttal. I don't know if you had anything else to say.
No, I mean, we have not done anything with the property yet, and it's because we need clear direction from the zoning board before we take any steps. But we're very eager to move forward with industrial use on the property and to make it the most beautiful property we can make it by professionally developing it and adhering to all the zoning codes that are imposed upon us. So, we intend to make it a better property for everybody. One more thing, in regards to the abandoned car that was there when we bought the property, you're not allowed to just go tow a car. You're not allowed to get it out of there. You have to get a salvage title, and you have to go through appropriate processes to do that. We were actually in the process of doing it, but there wasn't an abandoned car in the garage, and someone just decided to go help themselves to it and move it in the garage and took it. We didn't even know. But we were, Bruce Bowers was helping us, the prior owner was helping us to get a salvage title, and that just went, that, the truck went away. But you can't just, we can't tow it off. We can't do anything. We were told by the police department, one hour, to do that unless we have a salvage title, which is a process to make. Another thing to note, too, is prior to us purchasing this property from Bruce Bowers, there was a person that broke in the house and was living there for a period of time. And Bruce was able to get him out of there, but, but it was a problem. So, I mean...
Is somebody in there now?
Not to our knowledge.
No, I mean, I go in there.
How long is the house going to stand?
Well, once we get clear direction here, we're, that would be to start the process of getting it raised.
I believe you're going to need a demolition firm.
Yep.
Okay.
And that, and we, that house, as for letting it deteriorate, it's already deteriorated to a point of no return, so we're not letting it deteriorate. We just can't throw good money at bad, so we're not purposely letting it deteriorate. We're waiting for direction from here, which is taking a process.
Several things I don't agree with on that. I was in the property prior to Bruce selling it. It's not that bad. I can't agree with how the length of time with the vehicle being outside there, and a few others.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes. My concern is still, you know, he keeps saying he wants to put something nice and professional in there. What kind of zoning restrictions would we have with twenty-four-hour trucking, anything along those lines? Because again, L I and R can mirror as far as parking or, you know, outside security or similarities with parking. What restrictions would we have on twenty-four-hour trucking, noise, that type of issue, that type of concern? Because again, if we keep saying we want to put something nice and beautiful there, they want to make money. This is their property. They want to sell it.
So, I can answer that. Yeah, so that would be at the, if, once the use comes in?
Yes.
If it's something permitted, which there are several things listed in there that's permitted use, I reckon if this changes, whether it goes, stays the same. But that's usually a condition that the Board of Zoning Appeals puts on the property. You know, they'll talk about noise, lighting, because they don't want lighting going into the neighborhood community. You know, as far as parking, twenty-four-hour parking, then they actually set the hours of business that they can operate if their license is in there.
So, with that being said, do you guys have some type of clarification of what type of business owners you're looking to work? What type of?
to a point of no return, so we're not letting it deteriorate, we just can't throw good money at bad, so we're not purposely letting it deteriorate, we're waiting for direction from here, which is taking a process.
Several things I don't agree with on that. I was in the property prior to Bruce selling it, it's not that bad. I can't agree with how the length of time, the vehicle being outside there, and a few others.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
106, Howard Adams. My concern is still, you know, he keeps saying he wants to put something nice and professional in there. What kind of zoning restrictions would we have with 24-hour trucking, anything along those lines? Because again, LI and OR can mirror, as far as parking, or, you know, outside security or similarities with parking. What restrictions would we have on 24-hour trucking, noise, that type of issue, that type of concern? Because, again, if we keep saying we want to put something nice and beautiful there, they want to make money, this is their property, they want to sell it.
So I can answer that, yeah, so that would be at the, if, once the use comes in...
Yes.
If it's something permitted, which there's several things listed in there that's permitted use, if this changes, whether it goes, stay the same. But that's usually a condition that the Board of Zoning Appeals puts on the property. You know, they'll talk about noise, lighting, they don't want lighting going into the neighborhood community.
Right.
You know, as far as parking, 24-hour parking, then they actually set the hours of business that they can operate if their license is in there.
So with that being said, do you guys have some type of clarification on what type of business owners you're looking to work, what type of, anything you're trying to bring into this, this property, so?
Well, we don't have any clarification of that, because we don't even know what we're allowed to do with the property suddenly sitting here right now.
Do you have, do you want 24-hour work? Do you want...
There's not a lot, there's, I mean, this, there's not a lot of around-the-clock manufacturing facilities that, I'm, I'm not saying manufacturing facilities don't go around the clock, but there's typically, maybe like a Rubbermaid, the big giant heavy industrial, the heavy industrial, those are round-the-clock, clock-type facilities. This type of property is four acres on, and light industrial zoning, this wouldn't typically end itself to a heavy industrial environment that's going to be trucks constantly. I mean, you can only do so much with four acres. So...
You're saying... And, and, and once that's established, these things are built to, then they would have to meet criteria that you guys set?
Yeah, and if it's not in the book, because the book outlined it already, but if it's not in the book, and it's something like outside that's conditional use that's in the book, not permitted, then it would come to the other board. And then they would put certain conditions on it from, and then there would be all kinds of things that happen at that point, from not only looking at parking, handicap parking, but also if they have land, big parking for future use, for that nature, they take that kind of...
Hey Mike, would that also go for, like, if they were planning on putting explosives or something heavily toxic or something, they would also need pre-approval for that?
If, it wouldn't be aligned with us.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, you know, light industrial is for basically clean manufacturing. No, no smoke, you know, no exhaust tubes that are dangerous or anything like that, no, no explosives, so, you know...
We would like to think that everyone follows the rules.
Well, we do, but it doesn't, you know, it doesn't always work that way, and those that don't usually end up paying ice for, in ways of fines through the EPA, that. So, at this point, I, I think everybody has said everything that they're going to say about this project, so, there again, I'm going to ask for a motion, one way or the other, either up or down, if I could have that motion.
I'd like to keep the zoning consistent, you know, these small little, I mean, it's four acres, so it's on, on the industrial side or light industrial side, it's free. Like you said, what you, what you got to do with four acres?
Yeah, well, I mean, if you look at all, everything else down through there, because if, you know, there are small buildings that are, they're in townage, but they're all, you know, light industrial down through there. So, there again, I'm asking for a motion.
I make a motion that we change it to LI.
Thank you. And I have a second.
I still have, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Do you, do you guys have other properties?
No.
We have residential, some family, and two places, too.
So, so being that you bought the property as it is, the question I would have a thought of next to you is, like, what, what are your intentions with the property? And I don't mean like, we don't know because we don't know what the zoning is, because then I would go back and say, "Well, why did you buy the property not knowing what was going to be zoned?" So...
So, so we worked on this property for many years, as well as many of the properties around it. So this is the only property, with, with the exception of one other property that's in townage, that hasn't sold, and the reason was because of zoning. Our client came to us and said, "I really do sell this property, would you, would you be interested in buying it?" So we bought it at a price that was a risk for us, but, but we were confident that since our request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, that we would be successful changing it to light industrial zoning. And our intent is to, I mean, we don't have anything in Estonia, but we see a lot of demand for five to 10,000 square foot warehouse-type buildings for plumbers, electricians, HVAC companies, small warehouse companies, and some, and small manufacturers, and we're in the commercial industrial real estate business, so, so we see the demand for that, and we see it as an opportunity to slowly develop the property with maybe a 5,000 square foot spec building that we build, and we put it on the market for lease and try to attract businesses. So we don't have a, a user in mind, this is a speculative purchase, we're taking a chance, we, we, you know, put a fair deal together at a, at the right time with a client that, you know, wanted to, to, to basically help us out and, and to give us an opportunity to develop the project. So that's how it came about, we're probably not going to do anything for a year or two if, if the zoning is granted.
Yeah, motor grass.
Yeah. And raise the property, or raise the house and the barn, and get rid of the car that showed up there, clean it up, and, and, and then start to develop it. It's not going to happen immediately, it's going to take us probably a couple of years. But I assure you that when we do it, we'll follow all the codes, we'll screen the property, we'll plant trees, we'll do whatever we have to do to, to, to follow the rules.
Sir, if I could be a little more specific with that, I spoke with Bruce a few days ago, Bruce had a few residential buyers, and he was in the process of possibly selling the property to, they received a phone call, Bruce received a phone call from them, and offered him a little bit more money for it. Property, if you go onto the industrial road in Townage, they've got two of their Hall and Lee signs directly behind the property that they just bought here with Bruce's. So, we don't, we don't own that property, we sell leased commercial real estate. That property behind us is, is behind me, it's owned by Joe Scasio and Mike Lowland. So that property's not owned by us, if you go to the county website, it's owned by them. What we do is, we put a sign out there for lease or for sale, and when you call, we put a deal together for them. We don't own that property, we don't own any other commercial property at all.
That's, that's kind of accurate, having their sign out there, and then they lost the property from Bruce.
Okay, okay.
So you, you guys own the property now, right? You're in the contract with the property, so it doesn't really matter what's, what other kind of deals were going on, if they've already have a contract.
Correct. Yes. What, I'm sorry, what other deals?
Well, you're talking about a potential other deal that Bruce has, but it, it doesn't, it's kind of irrelevant, because he's already in agreement with these two.
Oh, yeah, 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 but that's, they bought the property and their signs are also behind, directly behind, so if they were to buy that property or possibly own that property at this time, that I do not know. Could there be a driveway all the way back from Crystal Parkway, all the way to Montego Road? Because that's the same way they purchased that property from Bruce.
They have, they'd have to go get permitted to do that.
They have to get permitted to do that, and then the property directly behind it has actually been bought by a company that I tried to keep in Brimfield, Apollo Heating and Cooling. Apollo Heating and Cooling is currently in Brimfield and is looking for four acres, and we tried to sell them that property, but they didn't want to go through this process, so they went behind. They bought the property, the property behind it is owned by Apollo Heating and Cooling, who are already currently looking to start their building, Bruce is saying.
Is that in Townage, do you have that?
So I don't, so that's, that's directly behind the property.
Is that in Townage, do you have that? Yeah, so that's Townage.
Yeah, it's Townage, it's Townage property, but that's owned by, that's not owned by us, and that's owned by people who are currently ready to build.
Okay, folks, I, I have a, I've asked for a motion, and I'm asking for a second. I will make the second on this, and we will ask for a vote, and we will do it by questionnaire number, one, if you would go through the roll call and ask for either a, yeah, your name.
Ron Jones.
Yes.
Tom, or, sorry, Debbie Darls.
Yeah.
Tom Sargent.
Yes.
Patrick Flair.
Yes.
Seth Allen.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. I know everybody's spent an awful lot of time on this commission, you know, working on this, trying to give everybody a fair shake, some people are not going to be happy with it, and others will. But if, if they do as well as the other three buildings going north, then, you know, I, I think they'll have a decent buildings for Brimfield.
Can I get a motion to, to have that sent over for trustee consideration?
Yes.
Yeah, might want to explain their procedure.
Okay, well, this is, this will here and it will now, and it will go to the trustees. There'll be no further public hearings on it except through the trustees. When it goes to trustees, and they will set a date for a hearing and a public hearing before they either pass. You have, at that point, you have the right to go to the trustees at their meeting and voice your, you know, your dissent or, or whichever. That's, I don't think, I don't think you can go through the BCA now, because...
No, so it goes, it goes to trustees, they'll set a public hearing date, and then they post it in the paper.
Do you know the date of that?
Trustees set the date.
Will it be about a couple of weeks from now, thirty days?
It'll be, it'll be within 30 days today.
And they'll have their agenda there?
Yes, they'll have a public hearing, and then usually what, typically, it'll go, the, we just had a trustee meeting yesterday, so it'll go in front of them, two weeks from yesterday, go to the trustees again, they'll vote on when that's going to be, and typically it's like before their trustee meeting, is what they do, and that's usually like at 7:30 in the morning.
It's 7:30 in the morning?
Usually the public hearing is at 7:30 in the morning, the meetings, you follow right at 8 o'clock, and then they vote afterwards.
What location was?
Uh, right here.
Right here?
Of 20th.
And they have their meetings on Wednesdays?
Yes, but it won't be for another, it would be two weeks from, I don't know that date, uh, two weeks from, what will be the next trustee?
I would think the 20th.
That's not the public hearing.
That's not, that's not the public hearing, they're just going to set the public hearing.
They will discuss when the public hearing will be at that meeting?
Correct.
Okay, and then when they set that, then you can voice your opinion?
Yes. And then they go, and they listen to everybody just like this order, and then they'll go to a vote from there.
And that's it, 8 o'clock in the morning?
Yes, and then if, if it would, should pass there, then there's a 30-day wait period to see if anybody appeals at the court of office, so...
After, so two weeks from now, Wednesday, they set the date of the public hearing, and then two weeks after that, usually?
Usually they set, usually they set that public hearing just prior to their next meeting. It should be within the 30 days then.
And then you'll have your 30-day period and the appeals period?
If they vote, that's, it gets the trustee to vote on, sometimes it do, sometimes it don't.
Again, I'd like to thank everybody for their input, I said it's, this probably not appealed to everybody, but I, I end up with this, probably the best thing for the, for the Townish up. I've spent a lot of time myself going down through that area and stopping and looking at everything. The barn down there is a dump, it, you know, I mean, it could be blown over with a, with a good wind, the outside, I didn't think was a whole lot better, you know, it's...
I was in there with Bruce, that barn's been there, you know where Rubbermaid's at, John Rhodes?
Yeah.
He built that thing, it's horrible, but it'll be there forever. I believe it should come down also, but John built that strong. And I've been here 54 years and just been a long-term resident there, and just...
It looked, it looked pretty good.
What a point in time.
So, so don't worry, we need a motion by the trustee.
So, yeah.
I, I just want you to hear that, like, whatever happens here, we're, we're not trying to, I would, if, if we go to build something and we, you don't like a tree that we're planting, I would like to come over and say, like, "Hey, like, do you like where that is", like, there's no, I, I don't want to, like, have bad blood, we don't, we're just trying to do something like you're trying to do something. I respect what you're, you may not respect what we're trying to do, you know, like, moving forward, like, if we, this all passes, I would, I would love to come to you and show you your plans, and maybe you say, "Oh, man, I, who knows if it works or not", but I don't, I don't want trees there, they'd be look better over there, that'd be great, you know?
Well, what's the, we...
I just would like, I just would like you to know, like, I mean, we're not, I'm not, I'm sorry, like, this is the property next to you.
Okay, so, probably be required to do a buffer zone or something.
Yeah, yeah, I read all that, yes, yes.
Possibly fencing, you know, so, you know, that's, the zoning inspector will stay up to date on all that stuff, and watch, you're watching. So, anyway.
And the only other reason why we need to have this meeting is because he has five kids, and I have two playing sports right now, so it's very busy, and my wife's working in Kentucky, so we have to go some of that.
Okay, we, this goes to the trustees, been approved by the commission, the zoning commission, it goes to the trustees.
If I could get a motion on that, possibly.
To go to the trustees, I'm sorry.
Make a motion, we send the amendment to the trustees for their review.
I'll stack it up.
Do you second it? All those in favor signify please.
Aye.
Okay. It goes to the trustees, two weeks. Okay, is there anything else that we have to do, anything on the...
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Anything on the PRD stuff, Mike?
Um, we do, so the next slide I need to have is the Town Center Historical District And I think Todd was here at the last meeting, and he's, and we went over the whole scenario, what he wanted to do. You guys wanted to elaborate, not to, I mean, we started off with the Town Center, and then instead of just doing it at the Town Center, we wanted to identify, I think this board wanted to identify every single historical structure within the town, just not isolate the Town Center. This came, you know, Mike Estenski and Sue Field were very adamant, "I'm getting this historical district here", Sue is here as well. There isn't any money, we did talk to Todd, Todd is getting a price. If you guys are willing to go ahead with, with what Todd showed you guys last time, creating this, and then, you know, getting the whole history of all of the homes, getting the architects department, I can see University, to go in there and identify each house, talk about the architecture, talk about the history of it, who was there, and all that, I think it would be a great thing to have.
Okay, I was at a meeting last night at the Bridge of Historical, excuse me, and we talked a little bit about this, the houses that already have plaques, historical plaques on, designating them as historical structures. The state of Ohio doesn't have requirements to meet the agendas for, for these things. You know, they can't have a path of tissues put on them, they can't be moved, like a Kelsel House, we can't even have that as a historical, although it's 160 years old, you know, because it's been moved. There are several other things, we have plaques, so, we, we don't know, since we're just transist, transitioning from a curator, one to curator, we don't know where to store a lot of this stuff, so, we do know that we have some. We're, we're also working on trying to designate what will be, what would be considered historical buildings in, in Brimfield, where we could record that and maybe get plaques on them that are reasonable, I think they were $50 for a plaque, and you do have to make an application for them.
So I guess in essence, what he's talking about is whether we want to electronically So I guess in essence, what he's talking about is whether we want to electronically report some homes here at Brimfield as part of his database. Hopefully, we can do the ones that do have, that can be placred. And there's probably some that aren't going to be placred, like the council house, that should be listed in that database as well.
Well, we could do it, so you guys could consider what's historical here and not the state. So if we're doing this district, we could consider the historical of Brimfield, then highlight it and create our own plaques and then have the whole storytelling thing like you've seen, you know, Todd do. The thing that I would suggest if you guys are interested in still doing this district is making a motion to get Todd Peets to get us a price on everything you want to do, have him come to the next meeting and then itemize everything you guys want to do in the historical districts. And then, once you guys look at it and approve it, then we could send it off to the trustees for consideration.
I'd love spending their money.
Yeah.
I would like to see us do this in conjunction with the Brimfield Historical Society also.
And we can invite them to the next meeting.
I think, you know, this is something that we've actually worked on off and on for probably what, the last three years I'd say, you were on board at times. And we, it got laid, way laid with COVID and then with the changing of the curator and all that. So we've lost a lot, a lot of our information that we had. So, yeah, we're, we're working on it right now, but. Put together, but it's all upstairs in the office and little bins that we haven't screwed yet. So anyway, yeah, can I?
I would make a motion to get at least a price to see where we're at.
Yeah, okay.
Be a good idea to see where we're at.
Have Todd do that?
Have Todd do it, we know, have electronics and work with the Historical Society.
I second that motion to get Todd working on a number. Because I think he did a real nice job for revenge.
Yeah.
He did.
And even though they may not be placred, there's a lot of nice homes here at town.
I think he's working a lot of man away and.
And there's some talks, I mean, you know, I look at the corner, you know, Prescott Fire Station. Obviously, I need to get that into a building. I mean, we can't have, have the stand there forever. So there's been a lot of talk with him moving into a building and he's had talks with me about building a new building for, instead of selling the blue house there, you know, and I was talking to my wife, I'm like, geez, and she goes, you know, that was a schoolhouse back in the day when she was little.
That little shack there.
So, you know, it's kind of interesting and then there was talk that Mike Kestensky says, well, let's have the house moved over to, you know, we're the council houses, I mean, and have it as well. Okay, so we're getting into a lot, but this commission has a lot like this that we're going to need to discuss and see what you guys want to do.
We're, other than down across the street.
That, that blue little house across from the fire station was a schoolhouse at one time. On the Zollie parking lot.
Oh.
It's like, it's a gray, it's washed out.
Two properties right now? It's just one property.
That was, you know, because there was a garage, garage. The little place there was a, for many, many years.
It was a restaurant too.
There was one.
Restaurant at one time, also.
Yeah, well, just about everything down there, there was a bar, a restaurant, you know. So, okay, I have a motion and a second to have Todd Peets research this. Right?
You want to re-up for a call or?
No, we'll just do it. I'll, we have, yeah, okay, yes.
Yes.
Hello, Dr. Miss?
I think we have all the guesses.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes. Motion's passed.
So the next thing on the agenda would be Regional Planning Commission Correspondence on the PRD text for OCR1 and RR districts. I did discuss this to the trustees at the last meeting, I said you guys were working on it. Regional planning last night, I attended and it was a little bit of a shock. So here's what happened. We talked about eliminating the PRDs, for example, the land by you guys is RR.
You can buy this.
Behind it. And they could come in, it's a lot of land, they could come in with private residential development. It's in the code book as it is right now. So we don't want that, we want to keep agriculture, we want to keep our OC, which is open space conservation, the same way. Now, when I first came in here, that open, only open space conservation district I seen was all throughout where Copper Creek is and Redwood is now, that was conservation. And it styled the highest density area we have, I don't know how that happened, I raised my eyebrows at how that happened, but it did. So we changed it and we went to our core with it. But we want to lock in our zoning, if it's open space conservation, then it should be a conservation district. If it's RR, then it should be rural, it should be agriculture, as well as RR1 and you want five acres of land. So I came to a surprise at Regional Planning that they're discussing district changes throughout all the other townships and they wanted us to wait here. And so the recommendation at first, before it was voted on, was to wait here for all this. And I said, well, I've got big parcels sold every single day and I've got to lock this in right now. So I got up and I explained everything to Regional Planning and then they came to my side and they voted for the changes of removing OCR1 and RR1. At a later date, when then all the other townships catch up to us, God bless, but we're going to go for it with it. So that's where we're at, but it was a surprise.
This is going to, that will prevent a lot of the face like the new RR from doing high density.
You know, that comprehensive land plan that we put together and we surveyed the citizens, that's, the majority of the citizens here in Brimfield want to keep agricultural and a rural environment.
Yes. So I would need a motion to approve this and send this to or set a public hearing for the changes.
They can back to regional planning.
Not to approve it, I'm sorry, but a motion to set a public hearing. So set a public hearing for it.
So that is, the motion is to keep that hearing, no PRD, I'm so sorry.
No PRDs and RC and RR1.
And that's housing, correct.
That's all housing, yeah, it would keep it as.
So we like abbreviations.
Which is why it's difficult to make a motion. What we're trying to do, what we've been doing since 2018, is take the areas that were like, what do you want to say, that they were escape clauses? And then somebody sneaked into an agriculture area and built a housing, so we're trying to eliminate those one by one. And keep, and we're not trying to stop housing, we just want it in the right zoning districts, RR2, RR3, RR4, you know?
And if somebody didn't want to come in and build, there are other channels they can go through. They can go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which has the judicial authority, legal authority to hear their argument there. So there are options, we just need to close that one.
Actually, it's just disappointing for me that no one up here on this floor looks like me at all, but you guys defend a certain situation. We've been here in Brimfield 54 years and there seem to be no defense of that, even though I look completely different than you, every single one of you. Recently, there's been words coming up and there's a few people around here that know exactly what I'm talking about. Not a fair shake, sir, it seemed like you wanted to kind of push that and there were all the residents that had been here at this meeting, none of them wanted that LI. And then you quote in near the end, well, north of that is light industrial, but that's townage. That's my frustration.
But if, if, if kind of, do you want to eliminate that, through their, same thing?
Helmings wouldn't go through again, would it, Mike? Light industrial trucking?
Well, we eliminated, so they, there were light industrial, but they got granted through, use is not covered come before the Board of Zoning.
But they would not go through.
But that, that board, this board removed that possibility, that was one of the loopholes, so you guys correct.
You had mentioned it would not go through.
It would not go through.
That's kind of my disgust, it's just, it was almost like a disappointment. I pay my taxes, I do everything that I should, but it's just very, very disappointing. Been there all those years, paid all the taxes, kept the property decent and, like I said, derogatory terms that came up recently and it's disgusting and a few people know exactly what I'm talking about, sir. That's my disappointment and it seemed like you kept wanting to go back, but allowing that.
Well, we gave everybody four weeks, something we tossed back and forth for four weeks. You've talked, I don't know how many times, and so just about everybody else. Dave and Judy also, you know, discussed their affairs of what was Mr. Billups there, we.
But it just didn't seem like he took that into consideration, not one neighbor wanted that LI on your road.
You're the one that voted or spoke up most about it.
I'm the only one?
I, this board has spent a lot of time and when we went to the prosecutor's office, you came up with a thing that was illegal to do, okay?
Came up with a thing that was illegal to do, that's public record.
It wasn't because we took to the prosecutor's office, got an opinion, it was done illegally.
Everybody has told me from Kent to attorneys that the property owner has to apply. And I don't know, I.
I think the prosecutor's attorney's office would know. What Kent says is, you know, what they do and what they say, I couldn't care less, that's Kent.
You also kind of said, hey, well, it's LI right up north of that and that's townage. So it's very disappointing, sir, I mean, I, I had a feeling it was going to turn out this way.
Well, I do think somebody would be disappointed if it was not, so I'm.
But they're not from Brimfield.
It is what it is.
They're not from Brimfield, sir, I've been here all my life. Talking to someone with March also being a, my building based upon being in this house, Phil Farmakidis' house, I was here half the time, it's just very, very disappointing, so I wish that.
Okay, especially. Anything else, Mike?
Yeah, so we want you to set a public hearing date for the Regional Planning Correspondents that they approved the OCR1 zoning districts to remove those PRDs, if you could set a public hearing date.
Okay. Let's do it next month, 6 o'clock?
September.
Yep, September 8th.
September the 8th.
At 6:30 or anything?
Or six? Is that okay with everybody?
We're 6:30.
Oh, you're doing 6:30, huh?
Yeah.
6:30, okay.
Okay, we'll have Lauren send out notice on that.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
Set the next zoning commission meeting.
The next zoning meeting will be September the 8th at 7:00 PM. Is there anything for the good of the order? I want to ask you a question about one property at the end of Ranfield Road, was the old one? There's two yellow houses, the one that is under, is it being ordered before or down or what, 30 or 60 days?
On Ranfield Road?
Well, it's on, on townage.
Oh, on townage. We have one on townage that is on notice right now from building and fire. We didn't send an actual demo, we had search warrants, we went there and we sent notice to them on their violations. They have so many days from them, once either they comply or they don't comply, then it comes back to me and then I will take it to the trustees and then we would start to give ban on that process. But I never jumped the gun on it, I give plenty of time to get it fixed.
Right.
There's one on the drive as well and then there's one on 261 in Magador that, that was sent notice and that's been, it fell down 30 years ago. I mean, it's been, it's been a long time. And the family's fighting, so I got one, one that calls me and said, we're fixing it up, I'm getting you the plans and the next one's, heck, we're not, we're tearing it down. So I'm like, well, you guys got to talk to each other and let me know what you guys are going to do, so, so we'll see what happens with that one. But there's a lot more. According to the census and Pat, you know this because you worked on the census, there's 250 abandoned homes in Brimfield and I've got to find them.
We had to send the people out to all them buildings. What even the places that you guys are buying? We had three times to visit by census workers to see if anybody was there.
It says, the census came back to 250. Yeah, well, no, well, we're finding, like, when we get complaints and the grass is overgrown. But if somebody's maintaining the grass and there's a car parked in the drive, it's hard to, it's hard to, how do you know?
Those 250, how many are restored?
Don't know. I'm sure there's quite a few.
That's part of the discussion.
And luckily.
That's something you should check into, I have worked with consortium investors in Akron, the Everett group. That's why I care, when I come here about the story, I'm really excited, thanks for doing that. I have, I own the Ernie's Building in downtown Akron. Some of the people that I've worked with, Tony Troop is one of them, he owns the Everett Revival Group and there's a Chandler's, Murphy and Burge who are upstairs in the Ernie's Building that do nothing but find money or historical properties and, you know, we, so I, that's why I came here just to kind of get a feel on what you guys are doing historically. If I can help out in any way, I'd like to do this.
Mike? Would you introduce yourself, I don't think anybody.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mike Ladd, I'm Mike Serra, I live in Brimfield, I've worked throughout most of my life, fixing up properties, historical buildings, I've worked for Cornerstone Construction and Everett Revival and a bunch of consortium, you know, investors, but currently work for Pennyworth Construction, I've worked 39 years in construction, so. But most of the buildings in downtown Akron, the historical district I've either lived in and fixed up while I was there and the people that I work with have done nothing but that type of work. They also have patient money and old money and know how to find federal funds and government funds and historical grants and different things to fix up, you know, left or different, you know, buildings. And Alan Burge, architect from Chamber, Murphy and Burge, his wives, they all together and helping, you know, do the plans and seek that money. So they guide you along the way on what you need to do, what you need to do to save the windows and paints and different things and get the grants and that sort of stuff. So I pass on the information if you guys are convinced or interested, but I was just curious. I was hoping someone's bringing that up about how many vacant buildings there were and then even for sale and that type of stuff. Maybe you guys don't have the money, but maybe someone, you know, could help, you know, groups of investors introduce something.
We've been doing a lot with the land bank and Sue's sitting in the meetings at the land bank and we did get one restored last year that came out really nice and that was on Old Forge. And that came out pretty good. And we've got some more coming up, so that's about it, they can only handle so many.
I have this wonderful, we could get even the cellways determined into a visitor's room, because I sit on that.
That is a good idea. That's a good idea. That is a good idea.
No, that's a good idea.
Well, he was, he was, somebody said, when, when he came to us and got the, for his, for his smoker there. He was, then he was going to stare it down. He was, he was going to stare at that.
Wait, that's awesome.
Sit down with us.
You know, for the. So, once that, once that passes. Yeah, well, who wants to act with that?
They don't sign a property there.
Yes.
You could, whatever their building's called.
Because he is.
If you ever wanna, any, any of his other work, uh, like, kind of, uh, Sandy, Sandy, I think it's Sandy, no, I'm sorry, off, uh, off medicine, countryside, uh, just, uh, countryside states. What is, what is that road where, uh, touchdown was built, all those?
Oh, Honey Chuck.
Honey Chuck, uh, Honey Chuck. Yeah, yeah, he can just go back in there and he probably built about twenty homes or more back there, he has these stuff. He's a great guy, and, you know, he works, works, uh, people, uh, works with them, so he does do a good job. Doesn't, doesn't just sort of, uh, 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 walk away like, uh, some of the others do. So, okay, anything else with the good of the order, any questions?
If there's a motion made here.
Okay.
Second.
Speeding is a jerk.